This town.
It's six thirty, so we can begin. Uh, let's, uh, this, this meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded. Looks like we're up. Um, six thirty, call to order. Uh, as usually, as usual, uh, just really for Alice, our new member, we conduct ourselves with Robert's rules and a quorum's presence, so we're able to move forward. And of course, uh, welcome, Alice, our new member.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you guys.
And I think you know everybody, so we don't have to do introductions, but.
Tom, Ken, Bill, Craig. Do you have your first names?
We.
I'll, I'll work on last names.
We quiz her for a half an hour before.
She's gonna have to tutor me, so. Well, very good, and, and, uh.
And Patty, Patty's not here.
No, she's in training tonight at school, I think it is.
Alice, that's excellent. I've been married to my wife for three, four years, and I end up saying, if I'm introducing her to somebody, literally ninety percent of the time, it'll be, Bill, this is my wife, Mrs. Daley. I can never remember her first name. I'm horrible, horrible with names. Faces I never forget, but names.
Kendall, that's pretty horrible.
That is horrible.
Okay, let's move on. We, we, we all know each other. Um, we've gone through this, uh, uh, filling of the vacancy, and that's what we've done, we've filled the vacancy. And, uh, oh, I know what I wanted to do. Um, if everybody wants to jot down Alice's.
Yeah.
Email.
You must have E S P.
A I, uh, excuse me, A L I V.
V as in Victor?
Yes. A L I V D A H L at Hubbardston, Mass dot U S.
Isn't she already on the thread, though?
I think that's her.
I don't know, I know.
And here's a letter about that.
Okay, thank you.
You have slid into Tom Bratko's slot.
Okay.
And you have what must be all his old emails.
Oh.
And I don't know when that.
I don't know if that would happen, though.
Well, it says the letter says.
Oh, it does say that?
Oh, wow. Am I, am I, did I read that right, Alice?
I've added her name to the list. Tom's email was moved over to her, so she will have access to all documents received prior to her.
Oh, wow. Yeah, I don't know how you'd actually go through and find it. I don't know how he arranged it, whether he had folders or what he did, but, uh, any questions, Patty has the documents and can retransmit something to you. So, welcome.
If somebody emails you on this, how do you assess your email?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, it is a, uh, application using Google Mail, Gmail.
Okay.
Uh, it's that big M symbol.
Yep.
And you'll have to open the app, and you'll have to get a password.
Yeah, she should have to get a password from them.
Right, you'll have to go see Patty, I think, on that, right?
Yes, I would.
She'll get a password from Patty, okay.
Right.
Yeah, and Patty will get it from our I T support person, and they'll, they'll, uh, probably send you an email with a password in it. No, I'm only kidding.
When's Patty back?
She'll, I don't know, is she in the office? What's today?
Today, uh, she works tomorrow, I think.
Yeah, all right, I'll get hold of her tomorrow. Don't waste any more time on mine.
If not, if not, please call Lori, uh, and Lori, this Lori.
Okay.
Lori Reed, uh, the, I call her the town secretary, but I think she's officially the administrative assistant for a select board.
Yeah, Lori's.
But she's a.
And who she is.
She's in everything and, and knows how to do things.
One of the two can tell me, all right.
Yeah. So, anyway, we'll skip over.
Thanks.
Well, thank you. We're also, uh, successful on the clerk position. You guys will recall, you people will recall that I, uh, was the one who was gonna take part in the interviews. We interviewed two candidates, we selected one, made an offer, and I think that offer has been accepted. I'm going to wait a while to announce her name because I'm not certain of it. Likely start, if she accepts it and everything rolls forward, it would be, uh, likely start Tuesday.
What's her name?
Well, her name, I might as well announce that. Her, her name is Christine, and I better get her last name right. I'm gonna say Shootlif, Shootcliff, Shootlif?
Oh, boy.
S C.
Christine sounds good.
Christina, I believe, Christina. I, I don't have her document with me. But we interviewed two candidates, they were both, um, pretty good. Took us a while to get those candidates to, you know, respond to our ads and whatnot, but, uh, this person's a Hubbardstonian, and, um, I think it's gonna work out very well. She has good experience, but she wants a smaller job, uh, than in her past. And, um, look forward to her starting. I, I made a stab at what I think are the five most important things to do in the short term, at least, before we, you know, get on longer-term programs. I, I wrote down here that, uh, meetings, preparation for the meetings, attendance at the meetings, meeting minutes, and, and collection of the documents and the follow-up necessary. Maybe she'll be able to help us with a list of to-do, you know, a to-do list. Um, for herself, orientation and training. We have some money that we can apply to training, and, um, we'll do whatever it takes to, uh, that we can afford, that it takes to help her, uh, get into the position. Fees and money management. We seem to have some continuing confusion about accounts. I've tried to reach our accountant, I'm gonna try again tomorrow morning. She, she's in tomorrow morning. She only comes in every other Wednesday and Thursday or something, and so it's a little bit hard to reach. If I fail at reaching her personally, I'll get her by email. But fee and money management seems to be something we need to formalize. Uh, we have a webpage, and if I understand the town correctly now, the webpage has been, the responsibility for the webpage has been disseminated among the various boards and committees. So, we have to get in there and restore all the old information and bring our up webpage up to date. And then, of course, there's always my favorite filing systems and being able to recover documents. Next subject on the agenda was, uh, fee schedule. We have, we, 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 uh, charge fees. And that money is not taxes. It's fees, and fees are allowed to be used according to our general bylaws. And if you open up your books and go to the general bylaws, page five, no, I'm sorry, page eight, you'll see a whole bunch of, uh, various revolving funds. And there's the fund, who it's authorized by, the revenue source, and the users. And about a third of the way down, page eight, you'll find planning board is the, uh, name of the fund, planning board is the, the authorized party. We get permits, I mean, we get fees from permits and inspections and whatnot, and we can use them to cover the costs of permits and inspections, like we do when we pay Bill, Bill Murray. But we can also, down at the bottom, uh, we can, we can use them for regulation revisions, training, consultants, and administrative support. Uh, I got those words in there about two, uh, annual town meetings ago, and if we look at our fees and start collecting that fee money, we may be able to afford the occasional special project, or a little more administrative support if there's a crunch. So that's the plan on fees. Let me go to the next topic, and maybe we'll just touch on fees again. Uh, assignments. We presently have some assignments out there. Craig, you were scenic roads and shade trees and driveways, and, uh, we're looking for a draft report from you on that. Do you have something for us?
I got a speech for you, Tom.
Oh, a speech?
Yeah, no draft reports, though. I mean, get some water.
Well, I'd prefer a draft report, pictures of what you looked at.
Well, I can do that, but that's still a work in progress. But, uh, I'm working, you know, closely with, obviously, the highway director on that, those particular subjects. Um, a few properties came up that probably need some attention with, uh, the subject, you know, violations. But going forward, I was thinking, we should almost have a scenic road permit flagging system, which I don't know how realistic it is in this town to have that be done, where the Board of Health, Highway, Building Department, and Tree Warden, somehow, we all need to cooperate with each other to flag any projects going down on scenic roads, so everybody's aware of, um, you know, that work is being done, and we can keep an eye on it and make sure, you know, no violations are taking, uh, taking place.
What were those boards, did you mention?
Uh, so far, I got, you know, if you think of any others, please, uh, Board of Health, Highway, Building, Tree Warden.
I believe they're working on a process through the Building Department. Anytime there's anything, uh, anybody in the town comes in, they wanna pull a permit to build, put a driveway in, do it, it's all be, we're, they're working on it right now to have it all tied together for the Board of, all the different boards, and so everybody gets the same information when all these are pulled, so that, I think that'll help that a lot.
Who's in charge of that?
I think it's coming through the building inspector's office through the town administrator.
So you had.
I believe so.
Board of Health, Highway, Tree Warden, and?
Building Department.
B I?
Yeah. And if you guys think of any others that could, could, uh, be beneficials.
I've always thought that we oughta make the real estate agent deal with it, too, because that's way up front, you know?
I just, I know we talked about that before, I just don't know how realistic, I mean, there is a lot of real estate agents, you know, so how you get that word out?
Wouldn't that, you, I don't know, can you legally do that? I don't think that's feasible or possible to.
I don't know.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's possible.
But that's the, that's the, like, the starting point, you know, and if you get them at the starting point, everything that happens afterwards is easier, but.
Yeah, I just don't know.
What, what is a flagging system? You said we need a, a flagging.
Just make everybody, I mean, I, well, I know our present technology's not up to date, but, you know, just everybody would get flagged when a project was happening on a scenic road. So like, uh, Board of Health would get an email, Highway would get an email, Building Department would get an email, Tree Warden would get an email. It would, you know, then also run back, obviously, to all of us.
Is there something we could send out to the town administrator to see what the status on it?
Well, I think.
Which is already in place, or if it's not?
If I remember correctly, I'm pretty sure this town's still a lot of, uh, paperwork.
Right.
So, to get people to follow through with the paperwork, to send it to everybody else, would probably be the issue.
I know a lot's being done with emails, too, though. With, with they, the way they have it set up, I know each department is getting emails to and from for communication.
Yeah.
So maybe that, it's coming better, I think. Um, maybe that's a request we could send to the town administrator. What's the status of that? Are we doing it? Maybe we are, maybe we're doing it wrong.
I've never received an email from, like, Board of Health or ConCon or.
No, okay.
You guys?
So maybe we should push, push it to them.
There is a database of properties, uh, that the town, I'm assuming, has, right?
I'm sorry, is there a question?
Was posed as a question, yes.
We should address the chair, so we don't have chaos.
Sorry.
If you wouldn't mind.
Just asking in general, is there a database that the town has of the properties in question that we, or the properties that we have here in the town of Hubbardston?
Yes, there's an assessors database. If you go to the webpage and go on assessors, there's all the property cards and maps and everything your heart desires.
Okay, but.
Yes, you're right. Yes.
So the question would be is, is can that be augmented to include a flag that indicates whether or not a piece of property or a house very specifically is part of a scenic road? That's where I'm going with this here. And those are typically enhancements that can be very easily added into a database as a flag. And so any query that would be done against that particular database, uh, could easily prompt somebody to understand or know whether or not that property in question, or even a street in question, uh, is part of a scenic road.
Well, we have a streets list. We have a scenic road's street list. The, the concern comes in when someone owns a property and they wanna sell it, the first thing they do is a perk test. And they haven't even contacted a real estate person. They just go in and see, is this land perk? And they blow through it and knock down stuff, and you get to where they wanna do the perk, do the perk, pull it back out.
And the Board of Health doesn't get told about until after it passes.
Well, sometimes that requires a ConCon permit to get in there. Sometimes they go to the Board of Health and get in there, but oftentimes it's just blown in. And, uh, that's where we kinda get into a sticky area. So, would you keep working on it and talk to the?
Oh, yeah.
Would you go to these other boards and say, what are your guys' ideas, uh?
Yeah, um, you know, obviously, Building's talking to Patty.
Well, don't rely on that. Uh, Patty's gonna be changed out for the new person here within a week, so.
No, 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 the Building Department, she'll still be there.
Oh, oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I said it wrong.
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, you know, I talked to the Travis at the Highway, so he actually gives me, you know, um, what's the word I'm looking for here? Heads up on, you know, stuff going on anyways. So, you know, that's a good relationship there, and, you know, Board of Health, I can talk to them. So, yeah.
Well, if you could capture that.
It's still a work in progress.
If you could capture that in a couple paragraphs, that would be great. Did you go out and look at anything?
Oh, yeah, I've been looking around. But the only other issue is trying to get a pre, a pre, um, how, how it was before all this work started happening. You know, without, you know, without the proof, it's hard to say, yeah, they, you know, they took this stone wall out, you know, I, you know.
Could've been twenty years ago, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Unless it wouldn't show up, and when you're looking at it, you could tell whether.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, some, some things you can easily tell, but others, you know, it shows, you almost wish, you know, you had, like, Google Street Maps in this town, you know?
We do, somewhere.
Oh, sixty-eight, maybe. I think that's about it.
A lot of the side roads aren't part of that.
Can I just ask a question? If you live on a scenic road, do you get a letter? Do people know they get a letter that they're on a scenic road?
I don't believe they have any knowledge.
Because I think the way to start would be, especially if you have a scenic roads list of addresses, is to compose a well-drafted polite letter that says you live on a scenic road, and if you plan to modify anything on the road, you need to take the following steps. Put the homeowners on notice.
And once you send that out, then, at least it gives you some leverage.
Right, because it's hard to blame the homeowner if they.
They don't know.
If they don't know, and they hire the guy to perk it, and, I mean, the owner shouldn't be on a, the police officer say, hey, you're, you know.
Right.
The perk, the perk guys in town are supposed to be kind of licensed by the town or authorized by the town?
The gentlemen that work, and this just came up at last night's meeting, at the Board of Health, the gentlemen that do the work on the systems that come in and you have a problem with your system are licensed through the town. If you're gonna sell your house and you wanna put it up for sale, you can call anybody you want, the state of Massachusetts, and they can come in and do a test.
But it's witnessed, isn't it?
And they can, they can blow a hole through the whole thing to do the inspection and send it. The Board of Health doesn't hear about a problem until they, oh, wait a minute, we got a problem on the system.
Doesn't the Board of Health?
We don't get notified.
Witness a perk test?
Yes, we do. A perk test is when they're putting a system in.
Oh, but a perk test for exploration?
If they're gonna expand or add a new system, sure. But if you, you have the system in your house right now where you live, and you wanna sell your house, you have, for, for the bank and for everybody else.
Well, that's a Title V inspection.
You have to have a Title V inspection.
And I mean, raw land, someone goes in and does a perk.
Yes.
That perk's not worth anything unless the Board of Health witnesses.
The Board of Health has that, they do, we do go and look at that.
How did, do, how do they inform you?
They pull a permit.
So there's the step.
That is the first process on a perk.
Why don't you start there and see?
So that would be, uh, so, in my theory, that would be a flag right there, so everybody else was notified.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you start with the Board of Health and try that? That, that sounds like you're, you've got a, a, a starting point.
Yeah, I'm working on it, Tom.
But those other parts of the process, they'll go through to work on a system, and we won't hear about it till afterwards, and they do do modifications on property. So that's something we, we really need to, to maybe, we're work, we're working on that, um, ourselves, that issue, so.
All right, Bill?
Now, quick question. Am I correct in believing that, as the property owner,
Mm-hmm.
I tell whoever's gonna do the perk test, that spot right here is where I want it done?
No.
That's not true.
No, they'll look at your property, the Conservation Commission will look at it, and they'll have an engineer draw up a system. They'll go and do a perk test on a, on a piece of property they, that they've looked at, and they think is gonna be the best perk, and the best place for the system. The homeowner can't tell them where to put it.
Where, when did that change?
Well, there's, there's Title V, right?
Try and write it in balls.
I wrote my house, I told the guy, I want you to dig right there.
Okay.
Nobody, and this, that was thirty-five, thirty years ago, yeah, so, I didn't know if that is still changed or not.
That was a long time ago.
But it, it, it's, he, he could say yes, but, he's gotta make sure he's such a distance from the neighbor's well, he's such a distance.
Correct.
Correct.
And if that has to move to accommodate those rules.
Right.
It has to move, right. You're not at complete liberty to put it where you want, but, that's kind of Board of Health stuff, but I also heard Conservation Commission mentioned. So I, I'd start there, Board of Health and ConCon, and see, see how you can, and, uh, institute the flagging system and.
And again, I think it's something the whole town needs to work on and communication through all the boards to kinda bring all this together, and we've talked about that at other boards also.
Yeah.
So, but I think the Board of Assessors list is a good way to start that, too, with a database.
Okay, next up is Bill on the gravel pits dumping, and we owe the, uh, s- select board a annual gravel pits report.
I haven't found a copy of the last year's annual gravel pits report. I have some pictures, and I'm working on a report that I have at home. I don't have anything I'm writing with me.
Lori would have last year's.
Oh, she would? Oh.
Well, we gave it to the select board.
Oh, okay.
If Patty doesn't have it. Patty should also have it.
Um, I've got pictures that I've taken.
And it would also be in.
The gate is locked again, so I have to walk in there right now unless I can get somebody to open it for me. Um.
You know anybody that could?
I have a, I have a cutter.
Uh, no, it's not gonna be that long.
No, I can get it.
I'm talking about a fellow police, a guy that could down and.
I, I can get it open. I can get it open.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll have more done on that in three weeks. I'm done with the, my other things going on, and things start, so I will have.
Well, we look forward to it, to the next meeting, then. Could you, prior to the meeting?
Well, when's our, when's our next meeting gonna be, though?
Um, I'm not certain yet.
Will it be in November?
It would probably be the first Wednesday in November, if all things went.
Then I'll be ready to go.
Went well.
Which is the seventh.
Unless something else comes up. I, you guys have been, I mean, tonight's meeting is a little bit out of phase. We don't have anybody before us with anything, so it doesn't disturb anybody, and, and it allowed Kendall to attend because he's missing next week.
Right, right. Right.
But, uh, why don't you, Bill, if you can boom out the draft with the, you know, the pictures, then we can read the draft and come to the meeting better prepared than just receiving it at the meeting.
Okay. Yeah. Sure. Yep, that'll be done.
And likewise, Craig. Kendall, you gave us a noise draft last time.
I couldn't hear a word of it. It was very soft.
Oh, my God. Somebody is saying I'm soft talking?
What, what, uh, can we do with this draft?
I haven't come up with a better draft yet. All I need to do is sit down with the, or I sit down with the Board of Health, or a member of the Board of Health.
That's right, that's where you were going.
I wanna sit down with the building inspector, and I have been talking with the hearing specialist that I go to. And the, the numbers that we have here, these are not only the state number, you know, the, um, decimals, but they are also for, uh, the federal.
Mm-hmm.
They adopted them.
Yeah, they adopted them. So I will have a nice document put together for that.
All right.
And I also wanna talk to the police, because on my street, the last few weeks, we've had three trucks, pickup trucks, with huge noisy engines peeling out rubber around the corner off of sixty-eight, and flying one, two, by three houses, sliding back and forth, and the noise is horrendous.
What company is that?
There's no logos, but we do know where they live, and the police know where they live. And we have informed the police that the next time it happens, if they don't do something about it, we will call, uh, the Massachusetts State Police and say the Hubbardston Police Department won't do anything about it. We need help.
All right, I think we have to distinguish between a specific incident and a general rule.
And a general, you're correct.
Keep working on, I mean, you can deal with your specific incidents as you see best fit, or as you see fit.
Yep.
Um, but you mentioned talking to the Board of Health, talking to the police, and pulling some other information together. If you do that, that'd be great.
Yep.
If, has this been issued electronically? Uh, this been issued?
This one here?
Yeah, did you boom that out email?
To?
To the membership?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
This particular one, or the?
Well, whatever's latest.
Everybody should have a cover, a, a copy, except.
I don't have a copy.
You don't have a copy. I will.
And Tom wouldn't have gotten one because it was after he resigned, so.
Right. I don't know if I have a copy here. I will get, I will make sure you get a copy.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't you rev it up as you see fit, and, and, uh, boom it out as Rev One?
Okay.
Always, whenever any Rev comes out, always distinguish it by title from the last one.
Yes.
Okay.
So if you email it, excuse me, I mean, just clarification, if you wanna email it to me, would it be through this Hubbardston website?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, the purpose of having a Hubbardston website is twofold. We can communicate with each other. And it, to some extent, uh, forms a, a repository for all the public documents.
Right.
And, and that's what one of the big goals is, have a publicly, a, a, a pile of public emails.
Well, we can get all the communications, and we have a way to save it.
No, I think that's great. I just need to know how to get it.
This is my reg, this is my regular Gmail. If I go up to here and I hit the, the box, and I, this is the one for the planning board, and it brings up all the planning board emails.
Great, okay.
And they're all right here.
Yeah, yeah, great. I do have a Gmail account, so it won't be that hard to figure out.
Actually, I, I put it back to my regular one.
And we, uh, we get the master plan. There's a topic.
Tom, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Are we gonna go back up to the special permit solar and subdivision and all that?
Did I skip something?
You went over the gravel, and we didn't really talk about fees. Are we gonna check, are we gonna talk about that, or are we just gonna skip over that?
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the fee schedule, I said I would return to it. The fee schedule, uh, what I'd like to do is go through what we charge fees for, and review them for the value being appropriate. Is it covering our costs, or are we running in the red? And, um, uh, these application fees, like I said, they're not taxes, they can go into our revolving account. And the fee schedules are being reviewed in other town, other areas of this town. Selectman did it, I think the Board of Health did it, and they compared it to neighboring towns.
Correct.
And they got some sense of high or low, or okay.
A few of our, the Board of Health fees are really low, other ones are within the same area, and other ones, the other towns are much higher than we are, so.
So. I'm sorry, so I was looking for a volunteer, Alice, to, um, to take over the, this little project. If you could look at our fees, I don't even know our own fee schedule.
Yep.
So we oughta write up our own fee schedule, and then.
In the Board of Health, we just, we made a whole chart of all our fees, and it showed all the other towns all on one page.
I saw that chart at the Selectman's meeting.
Okay.
Right? Was that, was that Board of Health and?
I believe there was a Selectman chart. I think I have it at home, but I believe there's an also a Board of Health chart.
Well, the Board of Health don't, too.
So, so my questions are, one is, um, are the town, are these various departments in the town using, when they're comparing, the same reference group?
Oh, well. Just the planning board.
No, I know.
Not whole town.
But I mean, we, they had the other towns listed that they were comparing them against. Um, are they all using the same towns to compare against?
We're going neighboring towns, is what they did.
Okay, so you're doing just, a budding towns?
Yes, that's what they, the, I believe the chart that they went on.
Those are the comparison groups?
I believe so.
So Templeton, Phillipsden.
Yeah, and it's listed on the chart, too. The towns' names are listed on the chart.
We need to get a copy of that chart.
We touched about six towns, I think.
Yeah.
Princeton, Westminster, Garter, you know, if we touch Phillipsden, Barry, Rutland.
Right.
So if you could just touch the contiguous, or whatever that right word is, the, the ones that we border against.
You actually touched, okay.
A budding.
A budding.
Correct.
And, and then the other question is, what do they have fees for and what do we have fees for? There might be a difference there, too. But everybody has special permits, everybody has, um, you know, uh, A N R applications. There is the possibility that somebody, some town does special permits through something other than the planning board, so you might have to, you know.
Right.
Just as an example, I'm making this up, it's fiction, but town, an, an, a budding town X gets their special permits done through the zoning board of appeals. Or some such thing. You'll have to go find that fee schedule from something other than the planning board. But what we care about is special permit. It doesn't matter what board does it, special permit, A N R, whatever it is.
I think the town's.
Right, it's the fee for the task at hand, all right.
So thank you, Bill, for pulling me back to that.
And, and the other thing I thought would be. And, and the other thing I thought would be interesting from the discussion that I was, the Select Board was. They did the, I think, an average fee, which would be, thinking back at fifth grade mathematics. There's also, you know, median and mean, and it seems to me it'd be good to have both those figures, because then one wouldn't throw it so far off.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So if I do two comparison columns and you're looking for a chart, something like, yeah, I can do that, I can do that.
Right.
And then we'll look at that chart and say, what should we do?
Yep.
And with a motion and a vote, I think we can change our fee schedule.
Is our present fee schedule not on the website, or?
I have never seen our fee schedule, so I don't know. I, I would hope Patty would give you a running start on this, but I, I've never seen it, so I don't know.
Okay. I'll talk to Patty.
Alright. Moving right along, we're up to master plan. I have two documents I'm gonna hand out. As soon as I make copies. One is the proposed master plan chapters and authors. And the other one is the proposed master plan chapters and authors, and they're different. So, we'll have to decide what a master plan consists of.
Craig, you get bit by a snake?
Poison ivy.
Oh, you get it bad, huh?
Cause it's too dark and I can see it, it looks like a snake.
Yeah, no, this whole, this whole arm is covered.
Ah.
Are you really allergic?
Yeah.
I was when I was a kid, I outgrew it, and now I can touch it with a bottle.
Yeah, that stinks the Parkinson's ruin.
Oh. I saw the dump truck going down, down the road today, was that where it was coming from?
Uh.
Full of foliage in the back.
Oh, the, the Red Trunk? No, we were, uh, that was Berry Run.
Oh.
No, that was last Tuesday, I was over there, and by Wednesday night, I started itching right there, and it just takes off.
Oh. As soon as you get a little liquid, then it just goes. I, I lived with Calamity Motion as a kid.
Some neighbor of my brother's, he has a birdie, and his niece got it, you know, in her mom.
That happened when I was on the Boy Scouts in the kid.
She had to go to the hospital. She was, she was in the hospital for two weeks and she almost died.
Yeah. Yeah, you gotta be careful of that.
Yeah, you definitely.
Okay. There's two, two pages here. One is the, uh, proposed master plan chapters and authors that lists about twenty chapters. And, uh, there was gonna be a primary and secondary author put in on the, on the line here. And then there is a page of descriptions. And, um. That was the outline of the, uh, master plan. I believe the Open Space Committee has done their job, and the Economic Development Committee has done their job. The second page is this tab, one with the box around it, it's got fewer chapters. I think there's eighteen on this page and about twenty-two on this page. Uh, it may pay us to have less. But, um, we need to go down this and decide, uh, what makes up a master plan. And then perhaps bug the potential authors as listed on the tabulated, on the boxed in version. To see what they're doing to get their chapter done. This was the way it was done last time, and, and the planning board is the overall coordinator of it. And we're about probably nine months behind schedule or a year behind schedule. And we should have it done here in about a year if we can, if we can crank it out.
Well, it looks to me, Tom, like the planning board has ten already, so we're ahead of everybody else.
Well, what ten says, conduct the survey, reduce and present the data, manage the master plan generation, and issue the interim as required, and final report.
Oh.
That's what that ten refers to. And then.
That was a nice way to ask it.
Um. Identify the contributor to each of the major elements by placing an element number, one through nine, besides the name, so that this thing would be a element number and a name. And, uh, that was the, that was the game plan. They did it another way here on this page, and they just put the person's name in. So, this is the mission before us. Um, we could do this a couple different ways. We could put one person in charge of it, and I think we'd drowned that person. Or we could break this up and, uh, assign some people. For instance, um, I, in the last meeting, we presented a table and we accepted it. That various people went to various other boards as a kind of a representative. Um, for instance, Craig, you're the representative to the Select Board. I was the representative to the Economic Development Committee and the, uh, CPC, I think. And, um, we might be able to assign our membership, somebody to talk to fire, somebody to talk to, um, the library, somebody to talk to Parks, et cetera. Put some names against it.
Although already I can see that they don't have the, uh, building department on this list here.
Yeah, there's, this, this list was more, the, the big, the typed one was more comprehensive than the box.
Correct.
Anybody got any ideas on how we can attack this?
Well, I can take care of the Board of Health.
Alright.
Since we're already at the meeting, you can probably do the library, correct?
That's correct. So let's, uh, I'm. Let's take the longer list, and use this as the tool, because it's got more categories. If we get to the end and we decide we don't need somebody's contribution, then we'll try eliminating them. But I don't know that'll work. Alright, library, TR. Board of Health?
Top of the list.
William H. Select Board. CB. Building Commission. Patty. I don't know anybody on capital improvement.
Is it on this list here?
Um, this, this list is out of date though.
Yeah, it is.
Well, the names are out of date, but the, the parties, the, the.
Oh, the same, cause.
Well, a lot of the people.
Capital improvements just says open, so realistically, who knows if somebody's actually on it.
Well, I can do, I can do CPC because I, last time we met, the table said I was the guy to go to that.
And preservation. Okay.
Um.
How about the conservation also?
Well, Bill, your Board of Health and Conservation Commission, they work pretty closely together. You wanna try that?
Right. Yeah, I can do that.
Council on Aging?
Who's the oldest one here?
I'm happy to jump in on something, I.
Would you like to, Alice? Talk to Claudia?
Council on Aging, I'm not sure, uh, I would, that's fine, I'll put my initials and I'll do it. Um, I'm not sure what we're asking these people to do though.
Well, we're asking them to write the chapter that the Council on Aging writes for the master plan, and we have an old master plan from the eighties that's already been done.
These are the.
Which has already been done.
You could look at as.
Okay, does it hold, each one writes a chapter?
Yes.
Okay, so these references from Mass General Law's forty-one eighty-one D, which is what a plan's supposed to entail, isn't necessarily the format of the master plan?
Well, it is the state law basis for a master plan.
Okay.
And, um.
So, so, but we break it down into the, each department doing their own, alright.
Right.
Okay, I'll check the previous.
Some of them actually are one-to-one correspondence, like housing.
Yes.
But others are, don't have a home, you know?
So like, library would be under services and facilities.
I would imagine that would be good.
Probably, right?
Yep.
Okay, I'll check the previous master plan. I got it.
Well, we all should check the previous master plan.
Right.
Find out how this worked. But that's the basic idea, Alice, and thank you. Um, Open Space Committee, we thought that was done. And Parks, anybody know anybody over in Parks? Anybody know anybody in Police?
I'll take the Police.
Oh, oh, alright.
Cool. I can do one if you don't wanna do it, I don't mind with it.
No, I'll do it. You've got a bunch of stuff there, right?
Um.
Yeah, I got a couple.
I'll bug the town administrator.
You want me to do the fire department?
Good idea. I don't wanna, uh, let's, you know, raise your hands as frequently and as fast as you want.
I haven't raised my hand.
Public Works, gee, who could do that?
Volunteers.
Alice?
Economic Development Committee, I already.
I'll take Parks too.
Wait a minute, I'm losing you here. Parks is?
Down to the bottom.
Okay.
Eight from the bottom, nine, eight from the left.
Yeah, Craig.
You're taking the fire department?
Yeah.
Um, so the IC open ones, capital improvement, historical, housing, long range facilities. Planning Board, School Committee, Town Center Committee, Town Clerk.
I'm on the Town Center Committee.
Alright, Bill. But you're getting hit pretty hard.
I'm done.
Alright, how about, uh?
I only signed up for one thing, so tell me what you'd like me to do, and I'll be happy to give it a try.
Who is, who is the Town Clerk? Is that Joyce?
Joyce is our Town Clerk.
I'll take that.
Alright.
Who's our historical commit, committee in town?
Sounds like you.
Yeah, I could do that. And I could do the, I don't know much about the schools, but I know about schools in general.
Oh, I think you'd be good for that. You were the, uh, School Committee person down there in Quavon, right? Not Quavon, in, uh, Wachusett.
Right. So the center school and the high school, we want something written about. Okay, yep, those three, alright, that's good.
Um, long range facilities planning, what is that?
There's a committee for that, I believe. I've heard, I've heard of it, I, but I don't.
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not writing this. We're, we're getting them to write it.
We're just talking. That's Paul Hale, wa, is the chair of calling this whole list here. So I, I've heard of the committee, but.
He's still the only person listed under long range.
Oh, is he? Oh, so I.
Well, that makes it easy.
Yeah. If he's even doing it anymore.
Yeah, I don't know Paul, um. Who wants to touch him and, and, uh? Alright, don't volunteer all at once, but, um.
I don't know who he is, you know how to get in touch with him, on his, uh, through the website in the town?
I don't know.
He lives up on Ragged Hill Road, top of the hill.
If. I'm not sure every one of these bullets.
Contact Paul Hale.
And that's in the website?
Yep.
Okay. I can do that. It sounds like if they don't.
Which one was that, long range?
Long range, yeah.
Alright, Alice, you're in long range. So we got, still have a couple missing. Housing and capital improvement.
Nobody's on capital improvement, so that's probably gonna be hard.
I'll take that one, no.
No, there is a capital improvement. They had a meeting here just.
Is it?
Uh, nobody's listed.
Oh, well, that might be true.
I bet you the website's not up to date.
I would start with Ryan, I believe he had, he, he tried to pull together, uh, capital improvement.
And in fact, one of us is supposed to be on the capital improvement.
Budgeting. Oh, Craig.
No, conflict of interest, Tom, can't do it.
It is?
Capital.
Um, well, Kendall or Alice maybe, right?
Oh, which one?
We got two. We got housing, and we're all on the ad hoc affordable housing committee, but that's not what housing is.
Right.
So we need housing and capital improvement.
I'll take the housing.
Alright.
Alright, I can take the capital improvement if you want. I know nothing about it, but I'll learn.
Well, I'm not sure you have to learn.
You just gotta talk to whoever's in charge.
To see what they, and have them update their thing, their thingies.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's driving it to completion, not doing it.
Right.
And I guess I'll be the.
So cap, capital improvement, water sewer stuff that's going on.
How about the historical? Historical was volunteered by Alice, mhm.
Uh.
Would include Zeta.
I'm gonna read, I'll read it top to bottom here right now.
No, that would be long range.
Right.
Um, capital improvement's like, what's coming up in the next budget. So, so like police cars, fire trucks, um, you know, highway department stuff, just stuff like that.
Alright. But groundwork too?
I don't think so. It wasn't on.
Alright.
I think they look out a couple years, don't they? It's not just one year.
Yeah, they, long range, they look far out, what are we gonna need in ten years, or five years, or fifteen years? And they talk to all of those different departments to say, what do you, what do you, what do you think it needs might be in thirty years?
I'm, I'm gonna read this top to bottom and see if I got it right or wrong, or yell when something hurts.
Yeah, so.
Board of Health, Bill Holmans. Select Board, Craig, Craig Boisson. Building Commission, Patty. Capital Improvement, Planning Commission. Oh, I brought it down wrong. Who's that?
That's me.
Alice. So who got that?
Alice.
Me.
Alice, okay.
CPC, Robinson. ConCon, Bill Holmans. Council on Aging, Alice. Public Works, CB. Um, Economic Development, TFR, and by the way, that one's done. Fire Department, Bill Holmans. Historical Commission, Alice. Housing Committee, Kendall. Library, Robinson. Long Range Facilities Planning Committee, Alice. I think that's good, because it goes along with capital improvement, and you can get a, a full picture of that.
Yes, it is.
And keep them, keep them distinct as well. Open Space Committee, that's done. Um, we need to resurrect it and find it and. Parks Commission, CB. Planning Board, Robinson. Plan, Police Department, Kendall. School Committee, Alice. Town Admin, Robinson. Town Center Committee, Holmans. Town Clerk, Kendall. Does anybody feel that they got too much or not enough, or, I, you know? Kendall, you only have three.
Three.
Uh, Bill has one, two, three, four.
Two, three. I have four.
Craig has one, two, three. Alice has one, two, three, four, five.
Ooh.
It's nice to have fresh legs out on the court. And I've, I've got a couple done ones, so I'm cheating a little bit, but, um, one, two, three, four, five. Alice, you're the only one that could be potentially overloaded. Do you wanna get into it and then yell if you need help?
Yes, I'll give it a try.
Is that fair?
Yep.
Thank you. That's a start. I'll publish that filled in by email, and, um. I guess what you do is you contact each one of those departments slash, uh, slash hardens and get them to think about it, get moving on. Alright.
Come on, yeah, I can do the police department, I see them every morning.
I'm sorry?
I see the police department every morning out here, I can get, I'll grab them tomorrow morning.
If you want.
No, I'll just.
If I need help, I'll give a yell.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Alright, on, I, I put a, uh, master plan, I said the Economic Development Chapter was done, and the Open Space Committee was done. And we'll attack the balance of the report, but I wanna mention that everyone, well, actually, everyone here was here last time. When we had this fellow, Todd Miller and Ryan come in and talk about economic development from a regional point of view. Come to find out, he's also taking individual towns' points of view. So we'll see what he produces, and, uh, we may have him back to present whatever he produces.
Is Vinnie still on the Housing Committee?
No, I don't, uh, well, maybe he is.
I'll, I'll give him a call.
Yeah, call him up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. This Economic Development thing is. This economic development thing is, is, uh. The planning board is. Is instrumental in that, but there's supposed to be an economic development committee. That's a standalone thing. And, uh. Presently doesn't exist. Ryan's trying to reconstitute it. We're gonna let him do that. So the next item on the agenda, if I'm right, it's ninety-one Seaboard, uh, ninety-one, uh, Williamsville Road. Which is Sol- Seaboard Solar.
Once was.
And they have announced that they're for sale. I had a real brief telephone conversation with Bill Murray. Who suggested that we write a letter and write to Seaboard and say that, uh, which is true, say that. We've received complaints and there are unresolved concerns. And when they sell it, the new owner assumes the responsibility to resolve those things. They don't go away just because they get sold. So I drafted a letter, but I was gonna have, uh, maybe Alice's help and Ryan's help and. See that this letter would get sent to Seaboard and put them on notice that they're, they're gonna spend some money before they. Even the new owner may spend some money to resolve these unresolved concerns. Yes, sir?
I do have a question regarding to this here. Is this a private sale or is this a, as I thought is that this was a, uh, a sheriff's sale? This is, this is actually a complaint that was, uh, set forth by the, um. There's two parties involved here. So there's, there's, there's Seaboard who currently is the owner. And, uh, there was a lawsuit against them and that they have, and therefore there's a sheriff's sale. Are we talking about the same thing or not?
Well, the sheriff is adjudicating the sale, not participating in it.
Okay. Okay. It says the way that.
Did you read, did you read this notice?
I'm sorry?
Did you read the notice?
Yes, and, and so that's what I was, the way, the, the way that you described it, it sounded like a private sale. But it is a sheriff's sale that we were talking about, right?
Well, what do you mean by private? There's no public, there's no public money in this.
Meaning that there is. No, what I'm talking about is it's not like, uh, two parties come together and say they're going to be, this party's selling it to another party. This is actually a sheriff's sale. The sheriff's sale basically will then get the proceeds and then, uh. Give the monies back to, or just to whoever the.
Back to the claimant.
To the claimant, correct.
Yeah, there's a claimant, the guy that put the racks in. It appears to be game change racking company.
Correct.
He probably didn't get paid all that he was due. He went to court, he got a judgment. And now this thing is gonna be up for sale.
Okay, so the new one.
But the buyer is anybody that goes to the auction.
Very well, okay.
I, I don't know who the buyer is, but I want him to assume all the responsibilities that we, uh, have a claim on. For this particular thing according to the, the rules of the game, you know, we.
Now, is this company involved with any of the other solar farms we have in town?
Have no idea. This is the only thing I know.
The one that owns this ninety-one Williamsville Road now?
Seaboard?
Do they own any other properties in town that, that they have solar farms on, or do they know?
Well, the, the one that owns it now is Seaboard Solar, and I don't know that they have an interest in any other solar system in town.
Good, okay.
Borrego, uh, some other ones are, are in existence, but I don't know that Seaboard has any other one. So anyway. This letter is to inform you that the planning board has received complaints regarding plantings and visual screening issues at this address. In addition, there may be other concerns. It's our intention to conduct a review of the situation and provide you with a report of our findings. Regarding additional concerns before November eighth, the date of the sale. The hitch here is that in order to conduct such a review, we have to spend money. And so the next paragraph says, it would be most helpful if you could either attend the next scheduled planning board meeting. We will inform you of the date. Or authorize us in writing to spend up to two thousand dollars reviewing the situation and determining the unresolved concerns. All such concerns are considered by the planning board to be obligations of the existing owner and continue on as obligations of the new owner. They're the key points I wanted to make, you know, there's unresolved concerns. We need to spend some of his money. And then, um, it continues on to the new owner. So, yes.
I could comment, seems to me if it's a sheriff's sale. It would suggest that the guy that owns it is. Doesn't have money, right?
That's correct.
So, because otherwise it wouldn't be the sheriff's sale. So if you send this letter to this guy. And then we spend our two thousand and then a new owner takes over, I don't know what the mechanism is. I mean, the old guy's not gonna pay it, he's judgment proof basically, except for his land probably, right? Or probab- I mean, I don't know, I don't know the circumstances, but generally when, you know, somebody's installed a fixture on the land and they can't get paid for their fixture.
They're gonna get their money.
They go to court and get a judgment and, so I'm, I'm just. I'm just, I wonder how you're gonna collect that money if you wind up spending the two thousand dollars.
Well, the, the only hook you have is to say when the present owner, um, commits to it. Or even gives us a check, if, if that's outlandishly, uh. If that's not, yeah, if that's not to be expected at all.
Obviously, yeah.
Uh, the only hook is that the new owner assumes that same obligation. And a letter like this informs the new owner that that obligation exists. Because the sheriff's notice talks about, um, all the encumbrances. You know, you assume all the encumbrances, and all I'm trying to do is get on the encumbrance list.
Isn't the encumbrance list limited to what's recorded at the registry of deeds?
Mm-hmm. Well, I wanna get on that list before the sale.
That's what I think.
So it would be. I'm trying to get, think, as a title of person, what it would be called, uh, um.
Wouldn't it be a lien? It isn't money owed to us, is it?
No, but I'm, I'm not certain that we're gonna resolve this tonight. This is the concept. I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to Ryan, if he has to go to the town attorney, fine.
Concept, yeah, right.
I just don't want the new owner to waltz in and say, it's not my problem. I want the new owner to assume.
How would the new owner know though?
I'm going to make this.
How would that be, would that be recorded?
This would be a condition of the sale. When the, when the, uh, the sheriff's notice, and now I'm making this up, I'm playing lawyer here, I don't know. But what it says is, um. Said sale of land is subject to any and all encumbrances of record. And so what I wanna do is get my encumbrance part of the record. Or the, uh, the town's, the town's, not mine, the town's encumbrance. In other words, uh, all the, the, the cost of finding out and the list of those things that are unresolved. It's not a zero-cost situation. He's gonna have to go in there and do plantings and fences and move a gate or whatever it is. And so we have to get the new owner to, at the point of sale, accept those responsibilities.
Another question?
Please.
Was, uh, was this permitted by a special permit?
Yes.
Okay, and were there conditions on the, in the special permits, suitable plantings, blah, blah, blah?
Yes, they're actually on the drawings and the plans of the, of the.
Yes, okay. Okay, so. I guess you probably do need to talk to council, but you probably do have a right to record because of special permits there. But the letter should probably be framed as pursuant to the special permit you were granted on such and such a date. These conditions remain unfulfilled.
Correct.
Good idea.
And then I think you could get it recorded.
Is this too cold?
Is this getting too cold for everybody? I'm gonna turn that up a little bit.
I'm a little chilly.
You are?
Do you mind?
Cause I know it's, it was getting cold.
There's like a draft.
I, I'm gonna get a glass of water too. Excuse me.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else?
No, thank you.
No, thank you. All right, well, that's as far as I'm gonna go with this. I'm gonna bring it to, to, uh, people who are smarter about this than I am. And. The, the whole objective is to inform the new owner that he has obligations.
You can do it.
So that's ninety-one solar. Um, and then, um, Bill Murray also mentioned that it would be good if we had someone from our town, an official. Attend the sale. And if necessary, hand a, hand a copy of this registered letter, um, to the new owner. And so that there's no, like, serving a summons kind of a thing, you know? Here it is.
Did he say from this town?
Yes, meaning chief of police or.
Don't we have a?
A constable, yeah, yeah, something like that.
Yeah, mm-hmm. We have that in this town, don't we?
Yes, we do. So that, they were the, they were the two comments from Bill, and I'm taking them as, as a really good, um, advice. Trying to act on it. That's a draft. If anybody thinks I'm walking off the edge of something, tell me now, but.
No, I think this is, I think this is important.
That makes sense, trying to go. Okay, my next stop with that would be Ryan and, um, maybe it's KP Law or something, you know? I don't like to involve KP Law, never will. Back to the agenda. Um, board organization. We have a new member and, um, filling a vacancy. And. I went over to Joyce and I learned some things. Um, we should all be sworn in. And when we get sworn in. We're given, it, it's a three-copy. Uh, carbon deal. We get this pink copy. And this pink copy says, it's supposed to be handed to the committee chairper- chairperson. As evidence that you've been sworn in. I've, uh, I'll have to go back to Joyce and get one of these, that I was sworn in. But swearing in is one of our obligations.
Do you think that's every year?
Um.
No, no, just the beginning of your term.
Just when you're elected.
I don't think so. And just for the, uh, public's benefit, I'm gonna read the oath that we swear into. I, and you give your name, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and partially perform all my duties imposed upon me by my appointment. To the office of, in this case, planning board, for the town of Hubbardston, according to the laws of the Commonwealth, so help me God. So it's a fairly simple, uh, oath. Uh, it's, it's saying we'll, excuse me, comply with the Commonwealth laws. And what I just said does not constitute anyone taking the oath. They can only be administered by, by, uh, Joyce.
Hey, Tom?
Yes.
Um, your papers are on top of the microphone, just so you know.
Oh, boy. Thank you for telling me. I don't know where I should go. Uh, person running the TV, did, did you hear all that? Come on out and tell us.
Hold the music.
We also have an obligation to get a, uh, uh, conflict of interest law training. Is that true?
With.
There, there's a manual.
When you're newly elected, yes.
Yes. It's in thirty days. When you're appointed or elected.
Hello?
I was summoned.
Yes.
Yes, I did hear you.
The, the mi- I had the papers on the microphone. Did it screw everything up or does it work?
No, it just made a couple loud voices.
Okay.
But I could still hear it. There are three mics in the room, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Where was I? Oh, yes, conflict of interest law. I think you, um, take a training, online training course and. Get a certificate from it and then you, uh, also get a copy of the law or some.
A summary.
Summary of the law. And then there's an open meeting law that you also get a version of and have a receipt for. And then recently, uh. The open meeting law folks say you're supposed to get determinations if any, I think it's anybody, any Hubbardston determinations. They say for the last five years. And you can go to the, uh, you can either go to the OAG's website and look at the open meeting law determinations. Or I have, I have three of them and I can Xerox them and, or scan them and give them to each of you. That constitutes what we need to do to be an official board as far as I can tell. Then the next topic on the agenda. Is. Associate member. And Craig, you wanted to have that as the, as a topic. Can you tell me what's going on there?
I actually wanted both of these topics to be on the agenda, backing up one topic.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but I would like to table the first one until our next meeting. To have it back on the agenda at that point.
And what is it?
Just reorganization of the, the board since we're missing a few pieces.
What are we missing? I mean, can you explain what you wanna do?
Well, we're gonna need a chairman because you honestly haven't been truly sworn in as chairman. We need a clerk if we choose to go that route.
Well, anyti- any time.
What do you mean I haven't been sworn in as a chairman?
Anytime that you have a, a new addition to the board, you're supposed to reorganize and vote as a board. Who's gonna be, fill whatever position, that's, that's.
Let's deal with one question at a time.
So technically, you're still, you're still an acting chairman because you've never been truly sworn into that position.
What do you mean I'm not sworn in? Who swears me in?
Or just a, um, the vote of the board.
Well, when a chairman leaves, the vice chair takes over.
As acting, until.
No, as chair.
Uh, I heard otherwise.
You'll have to produce some evidence.
Yeah, I will, next week.
Well, I make a motion that we reorganize and we have a vote for that right now.
I think that motion's out of order.
Do we have a second?
I think we shouldn't. I'll make a motion to table it until our next meeting, so I can get some information.
Okay, I have some information. Um, effective periodic, I'm reading Robert's Rules of Order, of Order. Uh, effective periodic partial change in board membership. In cases where a board is constituted so that a specific portion of it is chosen periodically, parentheses. As for example, where one-third of the board is elected annually for three-year terms, close parentheses. It becomes in effect a new board each time such a group assumes board membership. Consequently, all unfinished business existing when the outgoing portion of the board vacates membership falls to the ground under provision C on page two thir- two oh three. And if the board is one that elects its own officers or appoints standing committees, it chooses new officers and committees. As soon as the new board members have taken up their duties, just as if the entire board membership has changed. So what that says is you organize your board after an election. It goes on to say that the individual replacement of, of persons who may occasionally vacate board membership. At other times, however, does not have these effects. So if someone vacates a board and is replaced, that does not constitute a reason to reorganize a board. That's just filling a vacancy, which is what we did with the analysis case. So that's Robert's Rules, I'd be glad to make copies of it.
So I'll still make a motion at our next meeting to reorganize the planning board.
Okay, for these reasons, I'm gonna say that's out of order. You do that after an election. Okay? And the other one? Yes, sir.
Uh, there, there are therefore other vacancies, right? There's a vice chair that is not, uh.
No, a vacancy is an unfilled seat. We have a full board.
No, I, I'm, I'm just asking, there was a chair, there was a vice chair. The vice chair position does not currently, is not currently filled, is that correct?
I don't know. Um, normally, normally we had, in, historically, we had a chair and clerk.
Well, it should. I'm sorry, what did you repeat that?
Historically, we had a chair and a clerk. We don't have a clerk.
So in actuality, whenever the vice. So in actuality, whenever the vice chair, because we've ever had one before, Tom?
No, you voted me unanimously to be the vice chair. You voted for me, you voted for me, he voted for me.
So now, are you saying now we don't have a vice chair anymore, is that your new rule for the planning board, sir?
No, it's not my new rule.
Well, then we need to, we need to vote on that, don't we? That's just, we did it when, when we had the election and I came in. We did that and that's how you became the vice chair and that's why you're on the chair's seat right now today.
That's right.
But we're not doing that anymore, is that gonna change now?
Well, what we did was...
We don't have that position filled right now, we need to fill that.
Well, I don't know that we need to fill it. What I'm saying is that you reorganize the board after an election, you don't do it after filling a vacancy. That's all I'm saying. That's what Robert's Rules says. And the other question you had was associate member?
I would still request that the reorgani- reorganization topic is back on the next agenda, just for more discussion.
Well, I, I, we don't normally make a move motion to do something in the next meeting.
Well, I was, I'm asking openly for this topic to be on the next agenda, for our next meeting.
Well, I'm going to say in the next meeting that it's also out of order because of what I read on Robert's Rules of Regular Order.
So as a board member, you're denying my request for a, a general item?
Well, no, as a board member, I'm reading through Robert's Rules and explaining what happens.
But, but you asked me for my information and I'm not prepared to give it to you tonight, so I'm asking for a continuance into our next meeting.
You have no need of continuance. Bring it in next time if you have something other than Robert's.
But as long as I, we can get it back on the agenda, because obviously that would be violating open meeting law.
What do you mean?
I can't bring it in our next meeting if it's not on the agenda, because that would be a violation.
Well, you want it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Alright, on the agenda, that's fine.
Just so I can, so I can look into that from, because I heard differently. And you might be right, I might be right, I don't know.
Who's driving this? When you, when you say you, you heard it, who's telling you this?
I'm ju- I'm not prepared to say that, I'll be more prepared next meeting.
Okay.
So...
Well, I'd like some evidence, I, I presented mine.
No, exactly, that's why I would just like to have it back on the next meeting.
The other one is the associate member? You want it out on the agenda as well?
Yep, I wanna know what the, where Francois is standing as our appointed member.
Well, um, what's driving this one?
Um, I believe it's not right that you will not recognize him.
Alright. I've, I considered this asked and answered about four times. But if we wanna go through it again, I'll be glad...
But you're not providing any evidence to us and the board of selectmen went through and from what I'm understanding, from the town side, he is truly our appointed member.
Okay, what do you mean by from the town side? Who are these people?
Uh, I would say the town officials that run this town.
Who are they?
Select board.
Yeah, a select board, town administrator.
Alright. The town administrator is still doing this?
No, I'm just saying, like, the upper, the people that run the board.
Alright, well, the town organization is such that the planning board does not work for the select board. This is not like a corporate, uh, department structure. We're elected by the townspeople.
But the Mass Law also says the select board gets to appoint Francois's position as appointed.
Can you produce evidence to that effect?
Not right now, but I believe it's already been spoken for.
Alright, let me read you the state law. Okay?
I remember you reading it, I disagree with your interpretation of it.
I'm not gonna interpret it at all, I'm gonna read it word for word. I'm in chapter forty-eight, section nine, paragraph eleven. "Zoning ordinances or bylaws may provide for associate members of a planning board when a planning board has been designated as a special permit granting authority." And we are. "One associate member may be authorized when the planning board consists of five members. And two associate members may be authorized when the planning board consists of more than five members. A city or town which establishes the position of an associate member may determine the procedure for filling such position. If provision for filling the position of associate member has been made, the chairman of the planning board may designate an associate member to sit on the board for the purposes of acting on a special permit application in the case of ac- excuse me, in the case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of any member of the planning board or in the event of a vacancy on the board." That's the state law.
Yep.
What's it say?
I disagree with their inter- interpretation.
I didn't interpret it, what's it say?
Doesn't it say it has to be appointed?
It says...
The select board?
It says, "The chairman of the planning board may designate an associate member to sit on the board for the purposes of acting on a special permit application." And that's in bold print, but that is the state law.
I disagree with you.
Alright.
So I will make a motion...
Do you have a different state law?
I'll make a motion to recognize Francois as our appointed planning board member.
I'll second that, that's also out of order.
I disagree.
I make a motion when you adjourn, this is not going anywhere.
No, I'd like to read two more laws.
No, I, I make a motion when you adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Um, any discussion? Yes, there's discussion. Our zoning bylaws, chapter seven, paragraph seven point six state, "There shall be one associate member recommended by the planning board and appointed by the select..."
That's what I read, yeah.
That's our zoning po- zoning bylaws, it's in your book.
What page, do you know?
Seven point six. Um, it's the bottom of, I don't have a page number.
Seven point, I can find it.
Page nineteen. Alright, let me start over again. Seven point six, associate member. "There shall be one associate member recommended by the planning board and appointed by the select board. The associate member shall sit on the board for purposes of acting on special permit applications in the case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of any member of the planning board in the event of a vacancy on the board." If we're all here, the associate member has no role. Let me read another law. If you turn to page, uh, general bylaws, page five, I think? Nope, page four in your book. Way down at the bottom, says, "Other officers to be appointed by the board of selectmen." Says, "Planning board, associate member of," semicolon, "per town zoning bylaw, article seven point six." This is the one I just said. Those are the laws that, in my opinion, govern what we're talking about.
Can I just ask you one thing? The, the general law, and I don't have that in front of me.
Yes, you do, you have the general bylaws.
No, no, the Mass General Law, direct from...
Oh, the Mass General Law.
Doesn't it say the city or town can designate a procedure?
If they have designated a procedure.
And isn't this the designated procedure?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Seven point six.
Right, so this requires...
And it's designated by a two-thirds vote of the townspeople. It's a very, it's a mandate, we really should follow it. In fact, we took an oath to follow it. If you'll recall my reading of the oath, it says, "According to the laws of the Commonwealth, so help me God."
Right, I'm just trying to connect the dots, so this is our elected, there's no argument there. I think everybody agrees that it's...
Yes.
Alright, so, then it says, "There shall be an associated me- associate member recommended by the planning board and appointed by the select board." So the, the select board is the appointing authority for, so we've got this conflict that...
No, there's no conflict, there's a process.
There's a process, right, so...
In other words, the state law gives the planning board the authority to appoint this person. And there's no reason, I'm sorry, for this board...
No, the select board has to appoint.
Let me finish my sentence. There's no reason for this board to give that up. Because what happens is the select board will trample our rights. They have been trying to make the planning board an appointed board for about three years. If you look at their, um, June two thousand sixteen and June two thousand seventeen, meeting minutes of executive sessions, they get in there and they talk without public oversight, until the meeting minutes are published, several, almost a year later. They speak of the turning planning board into appointed boards, uh, into an appointed board. And I think that tramples on the rights of the, the voters. We're here and we're operating under those laws as elected officials. And these laws are, are not casual laws, they're our bylaws, they're put in place by a two-thirds majority of the people. And it's a, it's an important, it's not something trivial, it's very important. So if there's questions about what I'm saying, I'd be glad to entertain them. Uh, but those are the governing laws, I respect them, I'm sworn to uphold them. And I'm not upholding them for me or for our board in particular. I think we have the obligation to the voters.
I don't think the planning board can can do away with an elected planning board, the select board can do away with elected planning board.
Oh, it's not easy, and that's why they chose not to do it, it's very difficult.
I think it's a, an elected board by statute, isn't it?
Um, you can, I think they talked about, I don't know what's real, but I talked, I listened to their meeting minutes.
But I do think...
And they talked about the fact that they can change it to a elected board by going through some charter changes and whatnot. But it's very cumbersome and difficult, so what they've done is they have attempted to make it an appointed board by, you know, kind of taking it over with appointments. And, and that's very unfortunate. The, the voters of the town deserve to have an elected planning board.
But I just don't see how you get around the direct language of this particular provision, that the appointment...
It says, well, seven point six?
Yeah.
Well, it's pretty clear, it says the planning board...
We can recommend...
Recommends...
But the select board appoints, is what it says.
Well, we recommend it because we should have a say in who serves on our board. We should determine...
So you recommended somebody and they turned it down, the person?
No, they have not turned it down, they ignored it.
Well, I think that maybe the ball is in the hands of the...
Exactly, we have followed the process and they haven't.
But they don't have to appoint who you recommend.
No, but they have to appoint someone we recommend. Our recommendation goes first and their appointment goes second. And to give, to give...
If they don't appoint the person you recommend, then that person has no standing to be on this board, right, so...
So what would you do?
Well, I think I would say to the select board, why did you not appoint, you know, why your recommendation wasn't accepted? And if it's a reasonable, hopefully not, it's a vendetta against somebody or whatever, but it's a reasonable position, which it could be, um, you know, pu- put forth another recommendation.
That's right, I, I, I agree with that approach. But I don't wanna step out the process, I don't want the planning board to just simply turn our fate over to some other board. I think we have to respect the state law, which says, foundationally, the planning board has that selection by law. Now, we, as a town, we've modified it or, or further defined it. But it doesn't eliminate the state law. It simply says that we recommend and they...
And they appoint.
They approve or appoint.
But they, this has come up in other situations where I have a recommendation and appointment.
Yeah.
You know, you don't, you don't get the last, yeah.
Like the Supreme Court.
I mean, you can recommend, but that doesn't mean, and it's an important position to fill, so it needs to be resolved. So I think the select board should say why the recommendation, why you, they didn't appoint the person we recommended, not me, because I wasn't on the board. And...
Well, I think they have to go beyond...
Then it's gotta be resolved, because otherwise you're, you're missing a key person.
Well, it, it is a important position, but it's not key until we have, it, it's only activated by two real conditions. A special permit is in front of us and the board for some reason can't form a supermajority. The associate member has no role until the special permit.
But it says also, "In the case of ab- absence or inability to act or conflict of interest," it's not just a tiebreaker.
This is, this is only in the special permit chapters. All Article seven, the whole article is special permits.
Okay.
So I agree with you, Alex, I think that if we stay in the process, and, and the process was so good when, when we stayed in the process to fill the vacancy. It weren't really good, we got two candidates, we advertised, you know, we did everything according to law. And for some reason, the selectmen have decided to step out of the norm process and pulled someone out of the category that was not our recommendation. And, and I think that's out of process. So, that's my answer, Craig, and it won't change next week, so you're gonna have to go off and think about that. I offer it up sincerely, that's what the laws say, and we're sworn to appro- uphold, so... Um, Francois?
Uh, it is my understanding that you have an opinion, and that is a legal, that, that is an opinion of law that is based on a layperson's interpretation, which you are certainly entitled to. The town has a legal office or a legal council that can also provide interpretation based on the happenings that have occurred. My understanding is, is that something of this nature should be also considered therefore by the attorneys that provide the legal counsel to try to provide that level of interpretation, because for all intents and purposes, you could be in a stalemate where the planning board has their opinion, as you have stated. The select board says that they follow the process as they believe that they have. And I do believe that at this point in time, where the impasse exists, it needs to be first addressed from a legal perspective and from a legal opinion. And I believe that this board has at this point in time the right to present this case to the legal offices for their opinion. And I think that's one way to move forward, and they can then indicate very clearly what the next steps are.
The, um, this, I, I hear you loud and clear. But this board, probably more than, well, maybe board of health would be a rival. But this board clearly has an obligation to, in its everyday business, always be interpreting the law. That's what this whole book of zoning bylaws that we interpret and apply is about. We, we do that, you know, as a planning board, we do that for a living. And, um, if, if you don't think we can interpret the law, I think you're serving on the wrong board.
I'm not saying that, Tom, I'm saying that you have members of this board that may believe it in, may believe like you do, and there's other people in the board who may not necessarily believe the same way.
Well, I...
I, I respect your, I respect your opinion, but I also think that based on the impasse that exists, not only on your side, but also that of the select board...
Well, it's not my side.
Your side, and talking about the royal you, meaning you, the planning board, side. And, and maybe, you know, a fraction of that, a, a, a fraction of that board, because I don't believe that everybody believes, you know, has, has the same opinion. But given where this is, I think that a legal, a pure legal understanding and a legal interpretation has to be brought. Because these, this is based on a zoning bylaw that has been put together by the, by, by, uh, by, by the town of Hubbardston. And so therefore, it is my opinion that, and it's within the right of the planning board to present this here and, and request that this be presented to the, uh, to the, um, to the legal council.
Town council.
And, you know, if you put a motion together and, and present that to them, uh, for their analysis interpretation and for them to provide you with a clear interpretation of what should be, uh, what, what should be the next move, you can then theoretically take that back to the select board, assuming... You can then theoretically take that back to the select board, assuming that again, you were right, and say, hey. Even the legal, even the legal counsel is telling you to do it this way.
I think it was, I think it's pretty clear, I've said this now three or four times. Uh, I explained it briefly to Alice, and she immediately caught on, she says, well, then the planning board, the select board has to reject the rec- recommendation. And we have to put another person forward, that's the process, and it's very easy. It's the recalcitrance or the reluctance on the part of the select board to comply with normal process. And if they did, this could be resolved in a week, if they don't, then they generate what you call an impasse. But it's not us generating the impasse.
Well, that's your opinion, and I think that from the select board, they will have their opinion, and I think that the, the town right now is at a disservice. By not having, one second, let me finish please. Is at a disservice by not having an associate member, because in the event that you do have a special permit request and requirement. That you do not have the quorum that is required, because you are five members, but you need to have a super majority. And let's say, for example, one of you individuals has a, a conflict of interest, and therefore you would not be able to vote on it. And so because of that, the town at this point in time would be at, at, at a disadvantage of not being able to provide the services. That it isn't, that, that the town is entitled to. And that's why I think that it is important to resolve this matter, and the clearest way of doing this here is just to have that legal opinion. And again, I believe that the members of this board have the right to present this case directly to the legal. To the legal, uh, uh, to, to, to the legal, uh, company that is, uh, that, that is available to, to, uh. To the town of Hupperton, for them to provide their, not only their interpretation, but also to provide the guidance on how this needs to be resolved.
Okay, well, I hear your argument, um, I suggest that the select board take it under consideration and act accordingly. And the motion on the table is to adjourn, all in favor?
I make, uh, I make a motion not to adjourn.
Well, wait. Motion on the table is to adjourn.
Who made the motion?
I did originally.
It was seconded, and I said any discussion, and I started to read seven point six. So we're sitting here with a motion to adjourn, and, uh, all in favor?
I think there's a point of order, if he withdraws his motion before it's voted on, under Robert's rules, you have to start over.
That's true, so I withdraw it.
Well, I just voted.
And we just, you just voted, and can we, can we follow, let's follow through with the vote, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Let's follow through with the vote.
We just voted, yeah.
Okay, so can we finish the vote process, please?
Yes, that's what I like to do.
Okay.
All in favor? Alright, so the vote is three to two.
Okay.
Let's start over.
Motion fails, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we present our. Problem of our associate member interpretation to town council with the approval of the selectman, which we have to get before we go to town council, which I know. So we can get their opinion of the interpretation of the state law that Tom read. And also of our town zoning bylaws that was also read to.
And the general bylaw.
Correct, so we can get this and move on. Get an interpretation that both boards will have to follow, I believe, is that worded correctly?
All appropriate information.
Correct.
What's all appropriate information?
Everything the, that has to do with it, let the legal representatives figure it out. I'll second that motion.
Well, let me, let me, any, any discussion, I'd like a discussion point. Um, if every time this board, um, needs an interpretation of a law. We go to the lawyer. Um, I think in my experience here on the board in the last four years, I think we went to the lawyer twice, one was for the town pit. Who owns it question, and some other question we had once. Our job is to read these and understand, now, the last time we had this conversation, the last meeting. Bill, you admitted that you hadn't even read these laws, that's why tonight I've read them to you. Um, you really need to do your homework, you need to decide that you're gonna bore in on these things. Pardon me?
Can we move, can we move this, please? Thank you.
Move the question.
Correct, so which means we have to vote, yeah, correct.
All in favor?
What are we voting on, moving the question or?
No, to send, to send us to the. I think we are supposed to vote on move the question, but.
Oh.
We're, we're supposed to vote on moving the question, all in favor of moving the question? Alright, and then all in favor of the motion? Okay, so that passes, I'll prepare the document and get it to Ryan. I have it already almost written, because I read it to you, that's what it's gonna say. Anybody wants a different interpretation? Anybody have any other documents that I should be reading? Anybody have any consultation with anybody else that I should understand?
I'd just like to go by our zoning bylaws pers- personally.
Well, I read them to you, what about them?
Right, but anyways, uh.
The council know what to do.
Correct.
Exactly.
The council say, general law says, bylaw says, this is the situation, this is what you should do. I think, I don't know the town.
State law too.
Yeah, the sta- mass general law, state law.
State, bylaw.
Local, what happened, how to resolve it.
Does anybody have any other information that I'm overlooking, or that we have overlooked tonight? The answer is no, I mean, nobody says anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay, good.
So this town council has all appropriate information, just not what you're preparing, that's my.
I only know what I know. If you got, I'm asking you now, if you have something that falls into this category of all appropriate information, and you know about something. Put it on the table, don't walk away and say, Tom didn't send it, be, I don't know about it.
Well, that's why the lawyers should look at all the appropriate information that they need, it's just not what your interpretation of your document is saying.
Well, I have three docs.
I believe that would be the zoning bylaws in the, in the state.
State law zoning in general.
Given the language of forty-one A, section nine, paragraph eleven.
These were voted on as really as.
Town bylaw, given the facts, what do we do?
Yeah.
Right?
Agreed. Okay?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I, the only thing I would like to add to this here is, is I think that the factual events that took place, meaning. There was a set of individuals that you interviewed here, the one that you actually selected in the process of selection. Whether or not it was unanimous or not, whatever, the presentation of that information to the select board. And how the select board acted, meaning in their vote, and the way that they interpreted on, at that, at that point in time. So all of that information, not only the laws, but I think the events that surround this here, I think are important for the councils to have.
Well, would it include your going directly to the select board and their declaring that it was their decision? Before they even talked to the planning board?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't follow you, would you repeat that, please?
Would it, would those events include you're going directly to the select board? And the select board saying, de- declaring that it was their decision prior to even talking to the planning board?
I don't know what you're referring to.
Yeah, I don't know what I lost on.
The very first meeting where you came up as the candidate, it was a select board meeting. And the select board, um, Michael Stotter announced, but it's our decision. Before he even had any of these.
I believe that was the case, Tom, I think that Ryan at that point in time very clearly indicated that the protocol was. Because you were here, as was Tom Brockton, and again, this was, uh, maybe you interpreted it that way, uh, as, as I clearly see that you have.
He has, that's a quote.
You seem to, you seem to have some grudges against the select board, but that's okay.
No, I don't have any grudges.
Well, it, it appears to, but the, the point though is, is that I, 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 I as an individual. I as an individual, interested in being a member of this board as an associate member, did present my interest. And the process that was described to me at the time was, is that the appointment was actually being done, because I read the. I read the bylaws, that the appointment was actually being done by the, uh, by the select board. And as a result of that, Ryan at that point in time indicated that as a courtesy. Because of the fact that the opening was available, and that a recommendation had yet to be provided. By the planning board, that it should be there for the planning board to make a recommendation. As a result of that, I also submitted my application to the planning board and therefore followed that protocol. And so if you want to include that as part of the record, as you are insinuating that I may have done something incorrectly.
Oh, no, I'm not insinuating anything, I'm just asking for the whole record.
You may, you may include that too, absolutely.
That's all, that's all I asked.
Yeah, but I mean, if you're insinuating that I was trying to skirt and bypass the planning board, that was never the intention or the case.
Well, you, you just finished saying that the select board was making the decision. If I hadn't, if I hadn't been there that night, they probably would have just made the decision and ignored the planning board.
Well, because the planning board, because the planning board at that point in time had not made a recommendation, it is within their purview to make an appointment.
I think it was one week after the election.
Pardon me?
I think it was only one week after the election.
But it is, it is within their purview to do the appointment. A recommendation as, and again, this is a matter of interpretation.
No, this is the, no, this is again, the matter of interpretation, this is why I think that the legal, the legal process at this point in time.
Is to follow the council's recommendation, by the time they come back, they will assess this here, and this is why I think that the, the whole. The whole story needs to be presented, not just this is the law, this is the bylaw, and, and that's it, so therefore it should be cut clear. No, there's a lot of, there's a lot of other things that are in, involved here, and I think that in, including that pieces, those pieces of information. Are important, yes, you should include the fact that you had myself and two other individuals who applied for this position. Uh, through the planning board, and there's no reason why we should include that.
Only weeks later.
I'm sorry?
But only weeks later, but we'll see. Um, so we ought to return to the other motion, which is to adjourn.
Well, I think we have to do that again.
And make a motion that we adjourn.
Hey, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, gentlemen and ladies.